Mayor Mahoney.
Here.
Mayor Protema. Trustee Jeffrey.
Here.
Trustee Westcott. Trustee Cohen.
Here.
Trustee White. Trustee Van Lu.
Here.
We have a quorum. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes.
Mayor Protema. Trustee Van Lu.
Yes.
Trustee Jeffrey.
Yes.
Trustee Cohen.
Yes.
Carries. And now let's get right into it. Twenty twenty-three budget. Mr. McBroom.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Purpose of tonight's work session is to introduce you to the draft twenty twenty-three budget. Answer questions. And obtain any feedback you have. What happens after tonight is we we make additional adjustments to the budget and begin preparing the budget for official presentation to the community on October fourth. The entire draft budget is in the packet, but to help provide an overview, we've put some slides together. So Denise and I will walk through those slides fairly quickly, assuming you've had a chance to look at them already. And then we'll happily answer any questions that you have about the draft budget. Well, it's important to remind all of us who we work for. So thank you all for serving the community. This is the current list of trustees in the town. We also have a town vision statement. The budget is one of the most important things we do all year, but it's important to understand why we're doing it and what we're trying to accomplish with the resources in the budget. And in a key driver for all of us is to make the town a great place for families. We also have a number of unifying goals, and these goals were developed based on the feedback the board has provided since I arrived about what's most important to you and why are those things most important to you? So again, these goals help keep us focused and help assure that all the resources that we're going to be talking about tonight are being put to important purposes and accomplishing these long-term unifying goals. More specifically, as part of the board planning retreat back on June twenty-fifth, we developed a number of more specific objectives based on the feedback that the board provided, and they're listed here. A number of these are continuations of priorities that the board identified the year prior. These are bigger, longer-term objectives, but there are resources provided in the budget to help advance work in all of these areas. With respect to the twenty twenty-three budget, only one key change on the organizational chart moving into twenty twenty-three, and that is for budget purposes, we've created a new department that's the Community Development Department, and the current budget community development and the expenses related to our community development functions are part of the Administration Department budget. And this seems like the right time to create a separate department to better track and organize expenses related to managing development within the town. Key underlying goals that drove the creation of the budget. Certainly, it's important for the town to maintain levels of service. Certainly, we want to improve levels of service where we can, but at a minimum, we want to make sure that levels of service don't drop. We've talked a lot about the potential of becoming a home rule of community. It's also important that we attract and retain quality employees here in the town. We've done some work this year, and we expect to do some additional work next year to make sure this is a great place to work. We have some resources identified in the budget to continue upgrading our aging fleet. At the board's direction, we have funds identified to update the town's comprehensive plan and also our water master plan. And the impact fee study is already underway, but some of those expenses will extend into twenty twenty-three. An ongoing board goal is also to increase community engagement. We have some work undergoing already. In fact, the town's consultant who's been helping us with that effort, Heather Grady, will be before the board at the meeting next Tuesday night, having a discussion with you and obtaining some feedback from you to to better drive our community engagement efforts. And also, again, a continuing goal is to continue to develop strategies to build important community facilities within the town as we continue to see residential growth. Those key objectives resulted in requests that are included in the budget. We do intend to pursue a grant to update the comprehensive plan, so we provided two hundred thousand dollars to match what we hope will be a two hundred thousand dollar grant from the state. We have already begun working on an economic development strategy. We've talked about a number of those things related to the proposed development on the east side of the highway. Twenty twenty-three, we intend to codify into policy some of the direction the board has already provided to us. As part of the comprehensive plan update, we intend to to explore a community facilities plan looking long-term at needed facilities within the town, and so we have some money identified as part of that budget for for that work. To execute some of the key recommendations in our communication strategic plan, we have some money identified for continuing work. There is a fairly significant change to how the town will be providing victim advocate services in twenty twenty-three due to a change really in a in elimination of services by Weld County. So it's gonna require that we spend more money than we have been to provide important victim services services next year, and the chief can talk more about that if that's needed. As always, we have a number of equipment purchases planned. The goal in the budget is to aim one-time revenue in the budget to one-time purchases like the things that are listed there. We also are planning to replace the Community Services Officer vehicle, which is the date, the year of the current Community Services Officer vehicle. Which is remarkable, and the vehicle is is still in good working order, but it seems to us that it's perhaps time to replace that vehicle nearing twenty years old. Additional requests, we have discussed potential improvements to Building B to accommodate a temporary branch library. We're providing some money in the budget as a placeholder, though there are still some key decisions the board would have to make about that. We are aware of the deteriorating condition of the bridge on County Road Four over the BBC canal, so we are proposing some funds to match with an additional state grant to replace the deck on that bridge. The board has asked us to continue to explore additional improvements in town parks. We've identified some funding for that. As we grow our Community Development Department to better meet the demands of the development community and our desire to grow the community in thoughtful ways, we are proposing to add a planner one position in community development, depending on the state of the economy, the amount of development that we see in twenty twenty-three. That may not be a net FTE ad. It may be a reclassification of the current employee. We also are identifying funding for merit and cola increases. Next year, I was sharing with the mayor just prior to the meeting, starting that for the first time in twenty twenty-three, a portion of the raises that we traditionally do on January first will be merit-based. In the past, it had been a flat amount across the organization. This year, for the first time, a portion of that increase will be merit-based. We think that's an important step to being a great organization. We are just about to begin a market study of the town's fringe benefits. We have completed the wage market study and implemented those changes. We also committed to the board to looking at the town's fringe benefits and also assessing our market competitiveness, so we have some money identified. We don't know what market adjustments make sense yet because we haven't completed the study. So this is our guess at this point as to as to an amount that might make sense. We would confirm all of that through actual market research. The board has also expressed a strong desire to increase community outreach events, so we've identified some funding for that, especially some advanced funding for a larger event in twenty twenty-four to celebrate the town's fiftieth anniversary. I will now ask Denise to walk through these next few slides, which cover the budget in more detail.
Brian stole most of my thunder already, so I'm like, okay, check that out. Okay. So I get I get the boring pie charts. You know, I my my plan was just to start, just go around the the pie there and just briefly give you an idea of what I'm looking for in my crystal ball for twenty twenty-three. Sales tax, I'm leaving that flat. We're gonna meet it for this year. What we had forecast probably exceeded by a hundred thousand, so I'm basically gonna keep it at what I I forecast twenty twenty-two to be at. I'm not doing any kind of increase. Now, if we do open a quick trips or anything like that, hopefully, we'll see a little bump in the in the sales tax piece. You gotta keep in mind, like I said at my last report, that some of the the prices that people are paying are inflated prices right now, so that may be what is driving our sales tax to be a little higher is, you know, all the higher prices people are paying. So if that continues, then, you know, we'll 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 be good, but I'm gonna just leave that one flat as a conservative number. On the property tax, when I got this finished last week, I had yet to receive the certification evaluations from the county. They're usually due on the twenty-fifth of the month, and I got them after I had already done everything. So the number that was in there was just simply I cut and paste what was in twenty twenty-two over to twenty twenty-three as just a placeholder. After I did the calculations on Monday, it dawned on me that we are are paying off one of our bonds this year, which is a good thing. Our twenty twenty, our twenty twenty, our twenty twelve bonds, the final payment is in December of this year. And the payment was funded by a mill levy, a temporary mill levy increase each year to pay that debt service. So with that bond falling off, our property tax is going to be going down because we don't have to collect to pay for that debt service any longer. So the depressing side of it is we're gonna be collecting about two hundred and forty thousand in property tax to cover general operating, which means our our mill levy is going to have to have another temporary reduction or due to the five and a half percent cap. So our mill levy is going to be two point six one six. We're gonna be rebating to the citizens of the town about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars again this year. And then the debt service piece, because we do still have the twenty eighteen bonds that need to be paid. It's about three hundred and twenty. So the total that we're gonna be collecting for property tax is gonna be around five hundred and sixty thousand, not the seven hundred and ninety-five. So the good news is I had the expense reduced, you know, for the bond. The debt service had been decreased. I just didn't. I just did a cut and paste on the revenue side because I was just, okay, I'll I'll get those in later. So that's that's the bad news. But on the on the bright side, last Friday, we got the numbers in for our severance tax and our federal mineral lease. And we had budgeted only to collect, oh, what was it? I want to say fifty-four thousand or thereabouts. And it it came in over two hundred thousand dollars. So two hundred thousand, yeah, they kind of washed. It was like, okay, well, one's happening this year, one's happening next year, but you know, it's all it's all going into the same pot. So that was a good thing. And the other good thing about it is I probably could be a little more aggressive on the the severance and the federal mineral lease in twenty twenty-three. If oil prices remain high and if drilling picks up, those numbers should go up. And I was very conservative in this twenty, in this first draft, and I just I just carried over what because I had no idea of of what to expect. So I'll probably up that one by at least a hundred thousand dollars somewhere in between the two hundred thousand and the fifty thousand that I currently have budgeted. So that's, you know, that's a good thing, too. I'll up that number a little bit. Building use tax, that's high because we are guestimating right now selling about two hundred and fifty homes. That may be a little aggressive. So Chris, Chris and I had a discussion about that yesterday. And, you know, we've got a few months between now and December when we have to finally approve the budget. And we'll just watch the home market closely, and we we see it's already been slowing down a little bit. Home sales are down. I don't know that they are here in Lock Buoy, but in the nation in in general, I think I saw about eighteen percent decline in new home sales. So we'll watch that really closely. We've got one or two choices. Either we leave that number in and we just have a a plan B. If if development doesn't happen, we know what we're gonna cut immediately. First off, you know, not not get some equipment, not get some capital projects going, things like that. Or we just adjust it accordingly now and don't even anticipate that. So that's that's a number that we will watch closely for the next few months and see how the economy goes and how how home sales continue here. So motor vehicle sales, basically, I left those flat. The intergovernmental, that's our huffed and things like that. That's pretty much flat, not much of an increase there. Other taxes kind of left those alone. Franchise fees, I left those flat. They 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 don't have much. You don't have much of an increase year after year after year on those franchise fees. One thing we do have to do in twenty twenty-three is we need to look and make sure that none of our franchise fee agreements are are getting close to being renewed. And and find out the status of those because I don't know that anybody's looked at those closely lately. Usually, they're long-term agreements, but I don't know when the last time it was that anybody reviewed the franchise agreements. License and person permits, again, that's driven a lot by the development, so that that number will be watched, and we may be decreasing that if we think we aren't going to be selling the two hundred and fifty homes. Fines and forfeitures, basically, let that flat. Grants, the one point three million in there, as Brian alluded to, we are seeking a couple of dollar grants. One, if we want to pursue fixing the bridge out on County Road Four, we'd go for a tier-two grant with dollar. The maximum you can request is seven hundred and fifty thousand. So we'd go for the seven hundred and fifty thousand. Might as well just ask for the moon and stars. So and we are going for two hundred thousand, a tier, tier-one grant for the comp plan. And that one, we'll be submitting that either today or tomorrow. I think Chris was working on that one to get that one out. And then we have three hundred and fifty thousand coming in from CDOT to finish the trails. We hope construction will be finished next year on the the Greenway Trail. And the other one is we are anticipating if if we want to move forward with the shade structures in the parks, reaching out and trying to get maybe a GoCo grant to do part of that funding for any parks, park improvements and shade structures and things like that. Charges for services, the what makes up that amount, basically, the developer billbacks and our trash. And that one was increased because we do have that RFP for the trash. It's gonna be, it's out right now, and we'll know within a month or two what that's gonna look like. But I did build into the budget at least a fifteen percent increase over what we currently have, just anticipating between inflation and knowing what waste management management had already requested this year before their their contract was up. So I I did bump that by fifteen percent. The other ones, fees, increase those a little bit. And miscellaneous, that miscellaneous is sort of the catch-all. It's some of our T-Mobile, our leases for our towers, things like that. Those are pretty much set in stone. The severance and mineral, federal mineral leases in that number, so that number will go up. I am going to probably increase that one by a little bit. So so in general, you know, revenues are are looking are looking good as long as development continues. There's that big caveat. And we are pursuing some grants to help some cover some of our expenses. Now, on the uses of funds, you know, you you see the biggest chunk there is your wage and benefits, and that's pretty typical. And and seeing it's about twenty-six percent, a lot of places, it's a little higher than that. It's more in thirty percent or more range. So I think the fact that we're holding our wage and benefits below thirty percent is 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 telling. And that includes the the increases that we did with the market study that we just completed and factoring in up to a five percent merit slash cola increase at the beginning of the year. And that does include, as Brian mentioned, factoring in one additional FTE for the planner, which may or may not happen depending on how development goes. So so the wage and benefit piece is typically your largest portion of your your expenses. Operations then follows closely next, and that covers, you know, just the day-to-day things that are that take to to run the town. The grants and capital outline, there's a a slide coming up next, which basically shows how that two point four seven, two point four seven one million dollars is being spent, and there's a little more detail on on those items there. Professional services, that's basically all of our outside consultants between the water engineers and the water attorneys and the the planners and things like that. So that's what makes up that that large piece. Trash service pretty much is self-explanatory, and then the debt service. And then there's a small contingency line item in there for or just whatever comes up if we need a little extra money to be appropriated. So then I did a a department, just expenses by department. And as as Brian mentioned, we did break out the community development out of the administrative administration department. So that's why the administration department went down quite a lot because it a lot of it got moved over into the community development. So the things that are in the community development are the safe built for the plan review, their wages and benefits. The comp plan is in the the Community Development Department, billbacks. And then a little bit for outside plan, their planner and and legal, and that's what makes up that one. Police is police is is right after streets, and the streets is only high mostly because of that large project. If we do the the repairs to the bridge, and that's what's driving the costs in the street fund right now. Police, it's it's basically, most of that is wage and benefits for the police department, which is 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 pretty typical. They're not asking for a lot. They do have the one vehicle, and therefore the Community Service Officer, but other than that, that's the only capital outline that's included right now in the police department's budget. Debt service, again, I, one of the the bonds did will be paid off in December, so that's good. So we'll just have the twenty eighteen bond that's left out there still being paid out of the debt, the general fund. And that's that's about it as far as how the expenses are broken up by department. So this is, this just gives you more detail on the projects, and I think we mentioned most of these already. The trails project, we we are hoping to get the design completed this year and construction completed in twenty twenty-three. And so we will have, there's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for construction, and then we have to match that. So four hundred and fifty thousand is coming out of the general fund and two hundred and fifty thousand or whatever the remainder is, is coming out of the the Conservation Trust Fund. So I will expend the money out of the Conservation Trust Fund before I hit the general fund and use whatever funds are available there before taking them out of the general fund. Brian mentioned the library upgrades to Building B. If we move forward with that, we've got fifty thousand in there for that. And then again, the bridge replacement on County Road Four. We'd be looking at getting a grant. We'd go for the maximum amount. And then we would have to do a match on that one. For capital equipment, again, mentioned the the vehicle for the Community Service Officer in the police department. Public Works is hoping to get a greater evidently, Weld County might have one that they are going to be getting rid of that Chris says has been, you know, well-maintained and has low, low hours on. And so we're looking at hopefully being able to get that greater to replace ours. And then he would like a mower to increase for the the parks, to do the parks and the gutters and the the burrow pits and all that good stuff in the town. So it's a more hefty mower than what they've been purchasing in the past, which will probably, A, get the job done quicker and B, be a more reliable and long-lasting asset. And then the plotter would be for the 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 Community Development Department in order to to print all the plans and and things like that that they get. Then the one study is in there that, and that's the comp plan update, which would include updating the transportation plan, the parks plan. And and it it'll be a quite an intensive expansive study, which it probably will not get completed in one year. Yeah, it's very comprehensive. It is. It is very comprehensive. It'll touch on everything. But Chris, do you think that will get completed all in twenty twenty-three? Yeah. Yeah. So some of that'll probably be carried over into twenty twenty-four, but that's the breakout of of all the capital that's coming out of the general fund.
Next, we included the schedule that goes along with this budget process. There are some some key dates in here. The real advantage in having this budget workshop tonight is it gives us a fifth week between now and October fourth to refine the budget and prepare it for release to the public on October fourth, which allows us to publish this notice of budget by October fifteenth. That's the last meeting that the board has before October fifteenth. We will add as a placeholder a work session in November in case we need it. Last year, we didn't need it, but we'll have that on our work schedule, just in case we need to circle back with you, make any final decisions on the budget before the board would be asked to adopt the budget on December sixth. And that will happen on December sixth because of the state deadlines on December fifteenth. We included a number of department-specific objectives that I won't cover in the presentation. Happy to answer questions about them. If you have it, I do want to move ahead to one final slide before we turn it over to you for questions, and that's the reserve balances, an important part of our overall financial health. Do you mind walking through those?
So I don't I don't know if you all recall when the auditor was here in June. They they did make a comment that we have basically a year's worth of of reserves, and they said that's a very healthy reserve balance. And so you can see that we are, even with this budget, we're we're dipping a little bit into the reserves. But that's because we're ending this year exceeding our reserve balance than versus what we had budgeted. So we're gonna be starting off twenty twenty-three with a a higher ending balance in the general fund than what we had budgeted to have. So we will be spending some of that carryover from what wasn't spent this year into next year, but we're still gonna be ending the year based on this with well over five million dollars, which is is a very healthy reserve balance for the general fund. That's nearly a year's worth of expenditures in the general fund. So we feel pretty confident that that's that's gonna be a a pretty safe and solid reserve number for the general fund. The Conservation Trust Fund, as I mentioned, I will be expending that out to cover the trails construction, and I will use all of those funds before I hit anything in the general fund because that's that's what that's a good use of those monies in that Conservation Trust Fund. The water fund, it's 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 ending balance is going to be a little bit, little bit lower, but not a whole lot. There are a lot of, I did include in what you received the the CIP that Wayne Ramey has prepared. Chris Lorman and myself met with Ray, Wayne and Dan Wolfe, I believe, a couple of weeks ago, and went over the CIP for twenty twenty-two forecast and for twenty twenty-three for both the water and wastewater. And so that's what's included in there, and and the detail of the CIP that they prepared is included with your packet tonight. So tho- those numbers are mostly driven by, you know, a lot of that is development-related also. So again, those funds rely a lot on the PIFs and things like that that we'll be collecting. So again, if we decrease the two hundred and fifty permits downward, then those numbers in all of those funds will be greatly affected also. And then the the other big thing in the water and wastewater, obviously, the big expenditures are those capital projects. Operations and administration, administration especially, is is not a huge part of the water or the wastewater funds. And so that's, you know, we feel good about those revert reserve balances. We're not dipping into them too mu- And so that's, you know, we feel good about those reserve balances. We're not dipping into them too much. And I think we're getting quite a few things done. In the Water Fund in particular, we hope to get a grant. We're going to be reaching out to the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority, which is a long CWR PDA or something like that to see if we can get some funding for the elevated water tank. And so that's included in the water, in the revenue and the and the expenditures to get that project. And that's the project that we identified to use the ARPA money for also. So between the 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 grant loan money and the ARPA money, we're hoping to cover the the grant, the great majority of that elevated tank project in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, ending it up. So. So that's that's about it. That is, yes, I did increase the PIFs based on the, and and I did increase five percent just thinking that that's what's going to get approved for the wastewater side. So I increased the user fees, the rates in the in the sewer, left the water alone because there were no rate increases. So water sales, I left pretty much flat. The sewer revenues, I did increase by five percent, and I did increase the PIFs accordingly.
Before opening it up to the board for questions, I wanted to make your one additional document that's in the packet. The slides are a summary of key expenditures in the budget. The board identified a number of other priorities as part of the retreat on June twenty-fifth. There's also a memo in the packet that goes into more detail to let you know how we've addressed the things that the board raised on June twenty-fifth in the draft budget. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions or entertain any feedback you have about the draft budget.
I have a few. Number one, you had indicated early on that you estimate that the cost for victim advocates due to the Weld County backing off services or whatever would be about thirty-seven thousand a year. What has it been before this change?
Historically, I believe it was forty-five hundred dollars.
Correct.
The charge from the Weld County Sheriff's Office was forty-five hundred dollars. However, the services we would be attaining would be significantly significantly enhanced over what Weld County Sheriff's Office has been able to offer to the town. So that's a, that's a mitigating factor, even though the cost is going up quite a lot.
We were kind of in a situation with 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 Weld County doing this. It had been kind of a talk amongst the chiefs in Weld County about what's going on with the victim services over the last couple of several years. It's kind of really declined in. It's hard to get them to respond. I mean, this this is statute-driven, and we have to, victim rights crimes have to have victims advocate, and they have to have a process. It's all laid out exactly how it has to be done. So we're meeting our obligation by having Weld County do this, but we're giving out the cards and the pamphlets and things, but they were rarely calling. When victims would call them, they were rarely calling them back. They hardly ever responded on scene. The Brighton, the Brighton unit is completely, is completely different than that. They're a very robust unit. They take pride in the, they take pride in the fact that they want to meet all of them in their in their place. So they want to, they want to respond and get out there, and that's the best way a victim's advocate can be. So it is a shocker. It was a shocker with the, with the amount of money they were talking about, but when we look back and think about what they're going to give us, the forty-five hundred probably wasn't even enough. We probably weren't paying them enough to even give us the poor service we were getting, really. So.
That makes sense.
Great improvement for the citizens.
Keep going. Number two, remind me, if you would please, when the signalization project is supposed to happen? And is that something that we should be seeing somewhere in the budget?
That's a great question. The signalization project at I seventy-six and County Road Two is a bit of a question mark at the moment because of cost increases that we're seeing in that project. CDOT, as far as we know at this point, is unwilling to increase the amount of the grant. So the question for us will be, what do we think that increased cost is going to be? And would we be willing to cover that additional cost? So we don't have great information there yet, but we will soon, we believe, before the end of the year.
So no ballpark of how much that increased cost is right now?
We don't know yet.
Okay, that's fair, just that I'd ask. My final one at the moment is around the comprehensive plan. I understand that it's comprehensive, but it seems like a lot of money. I don't, but I've never gone through this. Like, how much did previous comprehensive plans cost? Like, what is the kind of breakdown of what that money goes towards? I just am curious.
For things, we are changing the zoning map. It doesn't allow for light industrial uses east of I seventy-six. We know that, and we've talked about that. There were no growth projections that were included in the plan originally, so we don't know how big we're going to get. How long it'll take to get there, if we even want to stop growing. So those are things that we want to know as we, as we move into the future. We're also doing additional transportation planning, so we know where traffic needs to go as the town grows and what the size of the roads need to be. And we also need to start planning, as Brian mentioned, for the addition of new public facilities, parks, recreation center, new public works building. We need a plan that puts us on sort of a path, you know, in the right direction in the future. So it it is a lot of money, but it's not your standard sort of off-the-shelf, off-the-rack comprehensive plan.
And it involves a lot of different engineers coming in and.
I would only add to that, to echo the mayor's comments, the transportation plan is rather labor-intensive on the engineering side. In addition, I know the plan will include a great deal of community outreach, and that tends to add cost as well. But an important element, if we have a plan that we know has the support of the community.
Our current transportation element did not include a traffic, comprehensive traffic study, which many of them do. Super-cost intensive, that in and of itself is probably twenty, thirty, maybe even forty thousand dollars. So. The one thing I didn't, another thing I didn't mention was stormwater. We don't have a stormwater master plan for the community. We currently rely on special districts to provide those services within each individual subdivision. So we really need to, you know, sort of start, you know, looking at that that big picture from a stormwater and drainage standpoint. That's not something that we've been doing in the past. So again, like I said, it's not sort of your off-the-rack comp plan like we have today. Not that there's anything necessarily wrong with our comp plan, but if you look at it, it's relatively thick in comparison. And parks and open space is another issue. We have, we've done relatively little parks and open space planning, particularly related to the lake property that the town does own and community facilities. Brian mentioned before, you know, there are issues there in terms of, you know, staff starting to outgrow, operations starting to outgrow the the existing facilities that we have. And so you know, you start to pile all that into one effort and, you know, the 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 bill does start to add up a little bit at the end of the day. And so hopefully, we'll be able to get that two hundred thousand or so to sort of split the cost of the state.
And I think, what was it, the last one, we got a grant for like eighty thousand dollars for the for the comp plan we did last time. So I think we did matched, I believe, on that. So it was about a hundred and sixty thousand. And it wasn't quite as comprehensive as well.
Yeah. Well, and again, not to hurt. The the transportation component, we've already gotten, you know, sort of informal quotes in the hundred and twenty to hundred and fifty thousand dollar range just for that chapter. So. And then we're probably looking at another hundred thousand or so for parks. So it does add up quickly.
Thank you, Chris. Any other question? Anyone else?
I think this is probably a simple tank question, but it seems to me like we have one point two million dollars less in revenue than we do planned for expenses. So does that work? Right. Sure, I can write it right now. So we take checks?
The key difference is using carryover funds for capital projects in twenty-three. So using one-time leftover revenue essentially in prior years for one-time expenses in twenty twenty-three. In an ideal world, we would have sufficient operating revenue to fund our capital projects next year because of the number of projects we're anticipating. Not not quite enough in operating revenue. The good news is our operating expenses are less than our operating revenue. So the difference is capital projects and the revenue needed to complete those.
So is there sort of a plan B around what might have to go and what might not get done? Or is that part of this process?
Well, there are. As we've mentioned, there are some expenses next year, particularly that are related to managing growth that may not be necessary if the growth doesn't continue at the rate that it has. On the capital project side, there's always a possibility the capital projects don't proceed, especially when we finish design and actually bid them out. On the operational side, I believe we've been conservative enough on the revenue estimation and on the projection of expenses that we're in a, in a pretty safe place. Is that fair? Would you add to that?
And besides the capital, you know, capital projects, you know, there's capital equipment and things like that, that we also could just not proceed with with filling the the need for in twenty twenty-three. We could skip buying the the CSO vehicle. We could skip buying the grader. So there are, you know, there are pieces of equipment especially that we could go another year without if if we have to. So there are ways to cut, cut it out if the revenues don't occur and the building does not happen.
One other important qualifier, we mentioned, for example, a proposed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to help fund the bridge replacement. If we aren't successful in the grant, we likely would not pursue the project next year. We would try again in another grant cycle. The idea would not be to make up that seven hundred and fifty with town funds.
Thank you both.
Anyone else? Trustee out?
You mentioned two hundred thousand less on property taxes and having to rebate property taxes. Now, there's something I understand. I thought pollists and his minions con, con the voting public into rejecting Gallagher. So I thought we wouldn't have to worry about property tax rebates anymore.
That, no, this is the five point five percent, the annual levy limit. So we are still subject. We tried once, years and years ago evidently, to remove ourselves from that five point five percent limit, but we're not. And so we can only collect, the the maximum we can collect is last year's revenue plus growth plus five point five percent on top of that. And so.
Inflation, so.
Yes. And so the assessed values went up. They did go up quite a lot, but we are capped. And the nice thing about it is, and I think I've mentioned this before, that will all go away if we do become a home rural city. That annual levy does not apply to home rural communities. So that five point five percent limit will will go away. Now that will, you know, the property tax owner people here in town, the residents won't be getting any more temporary reductions to their mill levies then. The mill levy will be that four point three percent, and we will be able to collect that four point three mills off of our entire assessed valuation. So the residents won't be getting these temporary reductions every year like they have been recently. And what I project right now is is Towns Mill Levy will be just a little over six mills in twenty twenty-three. So it's quite low. And you got to keep in mind that almost half of those, or more than half of those, is just covering debt service. But it's because of the five point five percent limit.
Chris, you have them? You have anything else, Mr. Redburn?
We will continue to refine the document. If there's a need to check back in with you between now and October four, we will do that. If there are significant updates, perhaps we'll just send those to you via email, the the key changes that we're making, some of the things that that were mentioned earlier. And if you have questions after tonight, please don't, don't hesitate.
Right. And with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, none, and we are adjourned at seven fifteen. And Mr. Struck, you're late.